Okay, it's five o'clock. I'll call the Monday, November 25th, 2024 Education Operations Committee meeting of the whole to order. First up is approval of the minutes. I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of October 28th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next is our excellence in education, Wassa West. Please come forward. And if you hit the button on the microphone there, it'll turn green.
Should we slide that back and forth, do you think, or will it pick up?
Um, I want to slide it.
All right. Well, my name's Jeb Steckbauer. I am representing Wassa West. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, so thanks for having us. I have three of our great warriors here with me tonight. Gina Jeong, Sadie Steinbeck, and Milo Holdhuisen. And they're each going to have a little bit of a part in our slideshow. Just to kind of start off, we, as you well know, have had a lot of construction going on at our, at our building. And so our first slide is actually the Jerry Johnson Turf Field. And put it up there because we're really proud of it. It really looks great. And so with that, we're going to talk about some other things with regard to our construction. And though it has presented some challenges, it's also presented some really great results that we've been already using. So, um, next slide. This next slide is Sadie's going to handle, and she is an international champion. And she'll tell us a little bit about that as she tells us about the Warrior Express.
Hi, my name is Sadie Steinbach, like Mr. Steckbauer said. Thank you so much for having me here today. So to start, that's a picture of me last spring when I had the opportunity to win first place at the DECA International Competition for School-Based Enterprise Retail, which was all about Wassa West's school store. And so I've had that position now for three years, and it has just taught me so much. And winning was one of many opportunities that DECA has provided me. It's given me many hard and soft skills that I have been able to apply, and it's given me a sense of purpose as a warrior. Thanks. So this year with the construction, we have done an entire rebranding of our store, and what started off as a closet-sized store ended up being around a classroom size, which has been awesome. We've also done an entire rebranding, so this included a name change and a logo change, which we had tons of students, including the manager team, involved in. And in our store, we have over 200 students that are involved in marketing classes that are able to get on-the-job training and retail experience through our store, and are able to develop hard and soft skills that they can apply without even leaving the classroom. So for me, this includes things such as public speaking, which this would have been something I really struggled with at the start of my freshman year, and now this is quite easy to me, and also hard skills such as operating a POS and also learning how to stock a store. This year, we have also introduced a lot of things to give back to our customers, since the majority of them are our students and their family. So one thing that we started this year was the Club of the Week, which we choose a club every week that we donate 10% of our sales to, which is typically around $400 to $600 that this club is receiving. And this has made a big impact on our Warrior community, as for some of them, this is the only fundraising they do the entire school year. We also give money to a Make-A-Wish child that we support every year. We support the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and in general, we just like to give back to our Warrior community as much as possible. Do you guys have any questions?
All right. So the other major part of our construction was our auditorium and music area. And so we have an international champion that you just heard from. Now we have one of our famous actors, Milo Holdhuisen, and he's going to talk a little bit about our auditorium and the renovation that happened, and maybe some of the results that we've already experienced.
Yeah, I knew it was going to be tough to follow an international champion. I don't have quite the accolades there, but, um, my name is Milo Holdhuisen. I'm the Drama Club President at Wassa West. I've been involved in shows since my eighth-grade year. I'm, uh, I'm an actor first at West, but around the community, I do a lot of behind-the-scenes with tech and lights and sound and stuff like that. And so, kind of moving in here, we had a huge renovation that really gave us a lot of things we didn't have. That top-left picture you can see, that kind of was, we, we got to move, we had a shed out, you know, a block or two from the actual theater, you know, around some fields and stuff, and we got to be able to move in. So not pictured is a very clean shed that has stuff that we can save for later, and the stuff we'll actually need. You can see the, the top-center picture, that's brand-new, um, dressing rooms. And obviously, you guys have seen all of this in the plans and stuff. But I will just say, the ability to have the space to keep things when you're not in a show is very useful. I mean, we have the huge shed space, which isn't even fully pictured in the two pictures here, as well as a costume shop, which we haven't been able to move into yet, but will be very nice to have that, you know, not down a couple hallways and some stairs to be right there with a ramp down. One thing I'll also comment on, the first thing I noticed when I walked, walked in was the, just how bright it was and how much more joy I felt when I walked in. I, I did a clap test on the acoustics, and everything has improved. Now they're, the, and going into, I'm also in the choir in the band at West, and to be able to move all of our percussion instruments down on that freight elevator, we used to have to lift them up on the stage because we had no way to move them down, as well as just places to keep the music things, risers, pianos, stuff like that. It's, it's been super great on all aspects, not even, not only just with our musical, but our choir concert we had there. And I hadn't even really talked about the tech upgrades. Brand-new mics, brand-new lights, brand-new boards, very up-to-date things that have been, have made productions infinitely times easier, and kind of been able to teach students a lot, I'll say with that. The, the second slide I had is from our recent production, and the shirt I'm wearing, Hunchback of Notre Dame, the Disney Musical. That's the set that we ended up building, and which we've, we kind of said a couple of times would not have been possible without the renovations, just to be able to, you know, build it in there, but also rehearse at the same time. You can see the floor is painted here, and that was something that we couldn't do with the old floor, just because of how it kept paint. It was some science thing, they didn't ever really tell me, but. And you can see, not shown off really well here, but the lighting, it just, that's a, that's a scene that you don't really get with the old technology. And the, the bottom picture kind of just shows, like, putting the time and the effort and the money into this really helps the community. I mean, we, we had better turnout for this show than we've had in, I mean, all the years I've been here, and I think quite a few after that. So really, just a, a big thank you, and a, giving us the opportunity to learn and produce productions that we can be proud of.
So we've had a famous actor, international champion, and now a queen. Gina, Gina Jeong is our homecoming queen. And, can I get that from here? But, okay. We're going to watch a video first, and then Gina's going to talk a little bit about our school spirit. After COVID and things like that, we've been working on our culture and our school spirit and inclusive activities, and so she's going to start with that as soon as we take a peek at this.
And while we are freshmen.
We sophomores.
Juniors. And seniors.
Well, I think most people in the high school love to show a school spirit, especially when there's, like, dress updates. A lot of people participate, and then in Color Wars, like, a lot of the different grades all do it together. A lot of people, like, are really happy to be here, like, it's cool, and, I mean, none of them likes school and all, but it's still, like, coming here. Everyone gets to see their friends. You're always bound to be, like, um, it's just a great environment to be in.
So I would say raise a voice. This is a good job of advocating for, like, mental health in the school environment. So I think we really bring together a lot of people who are passionate about mental health and trying to, like, reduce this thing on the school environment. It applies to the whole school and just trying to create a welcoming environment for all of the students here at West.
So just a shout-out to our, our Pub Lab, or not, our, our broadcasting class, excuse me, Nolan Travis and Scarlett Klinzke put together that, that video. Just to kind of show that off as well, that's part of, one of our club courses that we share. And now Gina's going to tell us a little bit about school spirit.
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm Gina Jeong. I'm senior as well, um, also homecoming queen, so royalty in the house. Okay. So as you know, homecoming's one of the most exciting year for not only us, but our underclassmen, because this is like, wow, like, we reached, like, our maturity kind of stage. And with that, homecoming is also known as a way to network with our clubs and opportunities. And we were blessed this year to, well. One vanished. It's okay. So we were able to collaborate this year with all of our grades, and by doing that, we were able to do, like, we were able to give back to our food pantry by the penny wars, but also open opportunities for our students, such as my new upcoming club, Hossa. It's directed towards our MONG students, and it gives them opportunities that they couldn't, like, seek on their own. And Wassa West is one of the most incredible schools for opportunities, such as DECA has provided for business opportunities in the future, but also more diverse clubs to be in the future, such as we started a Native American club this year as well, and more opportunities for our underclassmen to build up their resumes.
Good. And then our last slide tonight, just, just kind of a note, just, this is kind of our, our West community, how they, how it comes together, but parents, students, families in our, within our community have donated to our food pantry. And we currently have 31 families who we take weekly bags of food to. And it's, it's a real community effort. We have students and teachers in our ID staff that pack the bags weekly. We have staff volunteers that take them out and deliver them. So it's a kind of a, just an illustration of how the West community kind of comes together to help, help one another. And that is our presentation for this evening. Is there any, do you have any questions?
Yeah, one question. So will the auditorium be ready now for pop concert to come back to it this year?
Yes.
Because pop concert was at Grand last year. Okay, great. Questions from board members?
Sadie, if we built the school store bigger, could we use the revenue to offset our budget deficit?
Yeah. How much is this thing making?
Yeah, I think it's, from what I hear, it's pulling in some cash.
We can spend it for you if you need us to.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure about the budgeting of the.
It's only a million and a half bucks next year, if you could get that to me.
Oh, yeah, definitely. We could get that for you guys.
Thank you.
Give us about a week.
Thank you.
One other comment, the, the video of homecoming reminded me that to any board members, if you ever want to feel really good, go to the Spirit Day Homecoming event, like, wear earplugs because it's horrible, screaming. But, like, you just can't walk out of there feeling anything other than positive, because, like, the energy that you get from it is just, it's amazing. It's really cool. Anything else? Okay, well, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have time for public and student comment, if anyone has signed up. Okay, we don't have anyone, so we'll move on to the Wassa School Foundation update.
And I'll speak for Debbie Trader. She's not able to be with us, and just to give her a thank you and the foundation for all of their work. Three big things that I would bring to the board's attention that's been working on is the foundation, well, a few things. One is they have added a student representative to their board, so they have a representative from both.
She's just going to say, Kale, Gina's one of them. So if we want to give her a quick shout-out for that, since she's standing out in the hallway. She's, she's already given us phenomenal ideas.
That's right, yes. Yes, and adding them to the board has been a nice way to get student voice involved as well. They've also developed a scholarship this year, which is going to be new, that they're giving to our, our seniors at each of the schools. And they're working on a fundraiser. February 24th, they're bringing a comedian in for a fundraiser. Is it Tim Bador? Is that the, the name of the comedian that they're going to be having? So more information to come on that, but just like to give a big thank you to all of the, all of the Wassa School Foundation board members, and, yeah, thank you.
Okay, that's not an action item, just informational. Any questions from board members?
Kale, the one of the things she wanted us to make sure to mention was how all of the staff in the district can support through a payroll deduction. You probably have the words better than I do, but.
Yep. She had shared it at the start of the year with our full staff about how they can do that from a payroll deduction standpoint.
I'm guessing board can too.
Perfect timing. Come on up. He already did it all for you.
Oh, my goodness. So, how are you all doing tonight? I extend my apologies to you, because my husband was in a car accident just a little bit ago, and I had to go pick him up. So I apologize for being late. So those of you that.
No reason to apologize.
So everything's, everything and everybody is fine, so that's, that's the good part. Those of you that know me, I'm Debbie Trader, I'm Executive Director for the Wassa School Foundation, and I just wanted to basically come and say hi, like, I, at least annually, so I can say hello to you and let you know what we're up to, and give you a little bit of update. We, this year, we've got some really great things going on. We've decided to add two scholarships, one for Wassa West and one for Wassa East. So we're very excited about that $1,000 scholarship for each. We are in the process of doing a fundraiser, and I'm, you'll be seeing more information about that. We are bringing Tim Bador to town. Have you heard of Tim Bador, any of you? If you listen to Bob and Tom, you've probably heard of Tim Bador. He is going to be coming to town February 21st, and to do a comedy night for us. And he's originally from the Stevens Point area, so he knows the area well. He lives in Minneapolis now, so he'll be joining us for that, and we'll have a little silent auction and a wine pool to go with it, so we hope that the school board will support us in by coming to that. Information's going to be coming out shortly. We just got an exclusive sponsor. Emmerich Properties is going to be our sponsor to cover the costs of the events. We're very excited about that as well. So that kind of made my happy dance start. And another thing that we're working on is we are looking into getting vending machines, book vending machines for all of the elementary schools. And they have these in the Chippewa Valley right now at some schools, and they're, they're very successful. They use them for, the kids can get a coin for their birthday, or to meet, for meeting behavioral goals and things like that. And it's very exciting, because we also have a number of schools where we have a lot of kids that meet those poverty levels, and they don't own books in their home. I, I found out there's a number of families who don't have any books for their kids in their homes, and these books, they get to keep for free. So we're looking into the cost of that. I'll be, I'm applying for a number of grants for that as well, and so those are some of the things we're very excited about. And last but not least, I'm here to ask for your support. Please go online and to our website, and if you or our parents out there watching this are interested in helping us out, you can donate very easily through the website, And with Giving Tuesday coming up, the holidays coming up, we're very, again, we're very excited about all these great new things that we're going to be doing this year. And, oh, one last thing I'd like to tell you about, too. We also added four students to our board. Two seniors who are voting members, and then two juniors, one, a junior, a senior from each high school. And the two juniors who are up and coming next year, they will be voting members, and we'll bring new juniors up. So we're, so they are giving us already some great insights when it comes to the graduation party that we do every year. Some of the, when we did the Reach for the Stars grants, they had some great ideas and insights when it came to voting on those as well. We were able to give out about $15,000 in grants for Reach for the Stars for the fall semester, and I'm already getting applications for the spring semester. So again, that's why I'm also looking for support of, of the organization, so we can keep that alive as well. I rattled that off, because my nerves are like, ah, because of everything else that happened today, but any questions at all about the foundation, or about what we're doing, or anything like that? Anyone?
Just thank you.
Thank you. I'm very excited. It's, it's, it's very easy to get up and want to go to work every day, so, and I appreciate that with all the support I get from the district, from you, you all, and from the community. It's just an amazing and fun job, so it's a, it's a labor of love, I promise. So, and thank you very much for your few minutes of time, and I hope to, if you have questions, please, just holler anytime. I'm available to you, so, thank you all.
Okay, up next is an action item.
This is our 4K program agreement. The Wassa School District Four-Year-Old Kindergarten Program has entered into a program agreements with community collaboration sites since 2002. The four-year-old kindergarten program is seeking approval to enter into an agreement with the following partner sites for the 2025-26 school year. Wassa Childcare, Mountain View Montessori, Woodson YMCA Wassa Branch, Newman Catholic Schools, Marathon County Child Development Agency Head Start Program, Barrington Center, Kara Rakowski, 4K Principal and Early Childhood Coordinator, and Julie Shell, Director of Elementary Education, will review program agreements for the 2025-26 school year.
Good evening, everyone. So the Wassa School District Four-Year-Old Kindergarten Program has entered into program agreements with our community partner collaborative sites since 2002, so over 22 years of partnerships. These partnerships allow children to access Wassa School District curricular resources while also having access to wraparound care all in one location. These agreements ensure a consistent, high-quality 4K program across district sites, and increases accessibility to families, as well as fostering relationships between the district and our community partners. 4K community partner agreements strengthen the overall early childhood and early education system in our community. During the past five-plus years, the Wassa School District has had agreements with the partners that were listed, so Wassa Childcare, Mountain View Montessori, what, the YMCA, and Newman Catholic St. Michael. This year, we're asking to also issue an agreement with Marathon County Child Development Agency Head Start Barrington Center, which we have not done in several years. The language of the program agreement that's in front of you tonight is the same language that we have issued in the past, and there are no changes in that language from last year. And the details are all within the board packet. We can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members? So it's good to see Head Start back in again. It's good. Okay, then.
Just for that, Lynn, so you know, they approached us on requesting that.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Good. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the program agreements with the listed community partner sites for the 2025-26 school year.
Okay.
First and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is not an action item, this is our school safety drill update. Andy Graham, Coordinator of Pupil Services and School Safety Coordinator, will provide an update on the district's 2024-25 school safety initiatives.
Yeah, thank you for that introduction, Lance. Yes, nice. Sorry. Thank you, Lance, for the introduction. So I am Andy Graham. I'm the Coordinator of Pupil Services, and due to our administrative restructuring, I was also offered the opportunity to be our school safety coordinator. So I'm here today to present a quick update on where we're at, kind of an overview of school safety from the start of the school year, and then what we plan to do in the future. In the beginning of the year, myself, school resource officers, building administrators, and head custodians toured each building and each campus, having that safety lens to make sure that we are providing secure entrances, that all of the parking lots and sidewalks and anywhere that staff may be before and after hours are well-lit, and also that we have security cameras in all the main areas, especially our front doors, so that we can see who's coming and or leaving in our buildings. That all of our exterior doors are locked, and then playgrounds have either full fencing, partial fencing, and/or we're starting to add some barriers to certain buildings where, like, a cul-de-sac or a street may lead right up to the sidewalk, just to make sure that nobody would want to drive up there. And then we also did a walk-around to make sure that there wasn't any trees or access to rooftops or interior courtyards. And so that was also a very good experience for me, because that was the first time looking at buildings from a safety aspect, and I feel that we were able to come away with a lot of highlights and positives to make sure that all of our buildings are very secure. And then we also brought back the Wassa School District Safety Committee. And this committee meets bimonthly, and it's made up of Wassa Police Officers, firefighters, Sheriff Department, any, basically, from our law enforcement. And then we have district administrators from every level, every secondary building, school psychologists, school social workers, and school counselors. Basically, anybody that's going to be involved with school safety is part of that committee. And then we also divided it up into three subcommittees. We have a Threat Assessment Subcommittee, who's looking at some thresholds to make sure that if we are conducting a threat assessment, that we're following the same protocols for all students at all grade levels, and then we're also making sure that our procedures are the same, and that we're documenting them for ourselves, so that if a student transitions from school to school, or fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth, that those buildings are also aware that an individual had a threat assessment in their past. We have another Subcommittee called Drills, Procedures, and Communication. This Subcommittee is looking at our current practices, our current drills, our current level of communication, and they're also planning our safety drills, which I'll talk a little bit about on a slide or two, and then also our current documentation and communication with parents, teachers, and students. And then we also have a third one called our Safety Model Evaluation Recommendation Subcommittee. And there, we're working with, again, any law enforcement, fire department. We are evaluating our current safety model to make sure that it fits our needs best, and if there, if there's other ones out there, we want to explore those and possibly vet to see if there is an opportunity to change and/or, again, improve school safety. On November 5th, our school conducted the first district-wide school safety practice and procedures. It was very well-received. We did get endorsement from our local law enforcement. It improved parent communication, because there was one letter that went out to all parents indicating that it, on this date. So it wasn't, you know, one for Riverview and one for John Marshall, and two for, so it was really cool to have district-wide communication. It improved the planning from the administrative standpoint, and the teachers and the students, they all received the same message on the same day. And then we received praise from a lot of administrators, saying how easily the drill went, how successful it was, and again, that shared communication. And then another highlight coming out of Wassa West, on November 21st, you may have seen some of the news coverage on this, Attorney General Josh Call and Office of School Safety Executive Trish Kiplin visited Wassa West and had a roundtable discussion. They met with probably about 10 students and just asked a lot about, what is your perspective on student safety, and what is Wassa doing really well, what are some areas of improvement? And the highlights from that roundtable conversation with the students, one, is they applauded our efforts to make sure that we had secure entrances. They really liked that you've got to go through several doors that we have visitor-aware, our ID systems. And then they also liked that we practiced drills. They gave us some recommendations, but they definitely appreciated that every year throughout multiple times, we are practicing either a lockdown or an evacuation drill. And then what I found, like, the highlight of it all, was all of the students felt that they had a very strong connection with at least one or more multiple staff members. And I think that says a lot about our teaching staff, how they are forming very positive relationships, where students feel trusted enough to report to this adult if they feel like there's harm in the building, or if there's a threat to the educational environment, that they will go and report. Because we know that without student knowledge and without student reporting, then that's when the incidents happen. So again, I'd like to highlight just our, our faculty's effort to form relationships with our students. And then another big, big item for the Wassa District is we received the Act 109 Digital Mapping Grant. It's up to $100,000. We have 20 sites. 20 sites that are going to be digitally mapped. So what that means is we are, we're in the process of hiring a digitally map, mapping vendor. We have to go through at least two to make sure that, again, pricing and needs are being met, but they will digitally map all of our buildings and campuses, and that will look very helpful to our law enforcement. So if there was a, like, worst-case scenario, if there was an active shooter in one of our buildings, you know, let's say, like, the Wassa East Library, our law enforcement would know, looking at their digital sources, that here's my entry point, here's my secure, here's my evacuation plan, all en route, and we know school shootings last less than two minutes. So while police or law enforcement is en route, they are already planning how to create a more secure environment because they'll have it digitally mapped. Same thing if there was a fire or if there was a medical emergency, they would have that planning prior to even arriving at the scene. So again, this is all of a grant, this is all a grant that we received. We have up to June 26th to spend the money. Once we have an identified vendor, we'll be working with local law enforcement, fire, rescue, et cetera, to create a stronger timeline. Right now, we were just approved, I actually just turned in the forms this afternoon, where DOJ says you can now start spending the money, so we're in that process. And then just for continued work, as I just said, we'll, we'll have a stronger timeline for that digital mapping. At that point, we'll know a little bit more about how we'll utilize that with our law enforcement. We'll continue to evaluate our safety programs, and then we do have a, a second district-wide school safety evacuation slash lockdown drill planned. It'll be sometime in March. I think right now we're leaning March 5th, but that's not finalized, but again, because our first one on November 5th was so successful, we will definitely do another district-wide one. Continue practices for threat assessments, and then our subcommittees will continue their work. So my pleasure to give you an update on school safety. Any questions?
Questions from board members?
One comment and one question.
Go ahead.
Somebody else? Sorry. First of all, the school mapping grant sounds super cool, so I can't wait to see that timeline and see what you guys do with that. What a great opportunity, so good job on, on doing that. It sounds like the feedback from the Student Roundtable was really powerful that you did at West. Are there plans to do that with students from other schools or in other places? Because that last question especially, that's huge.
Yeah. I don't believe that the DOJ is, or the Office of School Safety has formal plans with any of our buildings, but as a participant listening, I do feel that it would be very important to incorporate student voice on the School District Safety Committee.
I agree with you.
And I'd just add that one of the concerns from the DOJ was, what is the negative impact on students when doing safety drills? Is there an emotional trauma that occurs with those things, and so what, what's the response to that? And I would say that from all cases within the buildings, we're very aware of the student needs when it comes to those things and having counselors available or teachers available, and I would say that it's a testament to our buildings that students do feel like there's a connection with adults inside the building.
Well, and I think having them have an opportunity to share back their reactions and thoughts, that gives them some of that agency, which makes the whole thing a little bit less traumatic and scary.
I was just wondering how often that you meet.
Our subcommittees are, so, our, our district-wide committee meets every other month, and then our subcommittees meet every month.
Okay, and if there's ever anything that you think is important, let us know that you think we need to know.
Absolutely, yes. And feel free to, if you have other questions, either Cale or myself can answer those, or...
Okay.
Contact me personally.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Next, we have a non-action item, a school referendum discussion. Josh Vigu will give a brief overview of a potential April 2025 referendum.
Thank you. So this is more of a discussion, so I'd welcome your questions and feedback at any point in this presentation. Really want to start laying the groundwork for what it would look like to potentially go to either operational or capital referendum this spring. We have the opportunity in April to ask the voters to support either of these things. We will not have another opportunity in 2025. There is no Fall 2025 option, just so we know. So we'll talk about both capital and operational, the differences. So capital referendum, essentially a good way to think about is it supports buildings, building maintenance or improvements or additions, so that's what we ask the public for, an operational referendum that supports ongoing expenses such as staff salaries or student programming, things like that. So when we think about some capital referendum considerations, we want you to think about that. We have the upcoming CSATEN study, so they're looking at all our elementary schools. They're going to recommend both immediate, kind of medium-term and long-term improvements to those buildings, and we should, we also want you to consider the work that was removed from the 2022 referendum. Initially, that referendum, I think, was, I wasn't here, but I think it was somewhere around $181 million, and then was reduced to $119.8 million. Most of, a good chunk of the work that came out to get it down to that $119 million amount was from the cap, from the elementary schools. So we had gymnasium additions or cafeteria additions that were pulled out, playground additions, and a couple other big-ticket items, and then a lot of small projects, HVAC and AC at the schools that don't have AC. So we have that need that was already identified that we, we did not go out to vote on a couple years ago, and then, of course, that we have the Elementary Facility Plan Task Force and their recommendation, which will come in front of you in December. Any questions on capital referendum? In terms of our operational landscape, we talked about it a lot, including this evening, about our budget shortfall from an operational standpoint, so we know that we have a continued funding shortfall. I'll share our five-year forecast, the most recent one, with you. Please remember that we did the community survey this spring. We had some of these same conversations, maybe May or June. We did a community survey of roughly 2,000 residents on whether they would support an operational referendum, and at that time, I believe the, the support was for a $3 million operational referendum, but 60% of the respondents supported that option. And then just a reminder on debt defecence, we have been prepaying a little bit on our, on our capital debt, which has created some flexibility in our mill rate and our levy to potentially do an operating referendum with little to no tax impact, depending on the size, of course, of the referendum. So this is the five-year forecast. Of course, a number of things in here will change, state funding, new transportation partner, health insurance, staff salaries, built with some assumptions, but you can see that our budget deficit quickly gets up to about $3 million and stays there going forward. And a little more on the continued funding challenges. We look at these two graphs almost every meeting during the, during the budget cycle, but if, it's just, it's our revenue to CPI, and if I could just draw your attention down to the bottom, bottom right there, I think that's a very telling number. That is, if you had our funding that we actually got compared to what CPI said it could be if we had just had per pupil CPI increases over the last 15 years. This year alone, we were $11 million short of that amount, and that's not assuming anything for cost increases other than the level of inflation, Some uses of operational referendum. Of course, close that funding gap, maintain and expand our student programming, ongoing maintenance of our buildings. There are, of course, needs that are additional, not just capital needs, and of course, attracting and retaining staff. And then, kind of, the inverse of that would be, these are some of the same things that would be impacted if we had a continued, continued operational shortfall. Some upcoming dates for you to think about, December 9th, we will, at this point, have the task force recommendation, and then December 16th, CSATEN will come in front of the board and share what they have for their study of the elementary schools, potential board decision on the 18th. This is, I'd like to ask you if you'd be open to a board workshop on referendum the week of January 6th. I know we did one this spring, but I think it'd be a good refresher. January 13th would be when we would have to decide on referendum as a board and administration. That's our last regularly scheduled meeting before the deadline. That deadline is January 25th, 2025. And then April 1st would be the vote, which is the Tuesday after we come back from spring break, so. That's all I have. Again, this was just kind of a primer for you. Are there any questions for us, or things you'd like us to consider before we bring this information in front of you?
Just a couple comments, Josh. I know historically we talked about creating a story for the community that is crystal clear in terms of, you know, here's the items that we're, or the actions that we're taking to save money. In order to do that, we may have to actually spend some money so we can save it in the long term, and then also helping folks understand that, you know, failure to do this, if it's an operating referendum or whatever, is going to mean these specific cuts, as you alluded to. And I, I think that it, just my suggestion is that if we keep it very, very straightforward and to the point on any and all items that we're gonna throw in there, I think that people are much more inclined to support it because it's, it's, it's a fairly easy story if we don't complicate it ourselves, if that makes sense.
It makes complete sense. I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from board members? We don't have to decide now, but also, you know, any thoughts on the idea of that board workshop, that first week of January? I think it sounds like a good idea. Pressure, seen a lot of head nods, so maybe we can try to work on putting something together, get that on the calendar.
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
If there is anything else, thank you for your feedback.
All right, thanks, Josh. And I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned, but we're gonna be going right back into another one here. And I'm calling the Monday, November 25th, 2024 Special Meeting to order, and I am seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss transportation partner pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, contract evaluation pursuant to 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E Sub G, and then to reconvene an open session to take further action if necessary and appropriate. I'll need a first and a second, and then we'll do a roll call.
So.
Second.
Sarah Bra. Yes.
Karen Fisher.
Yes.
Kat McKee.
Yes.
Jennifer Bailey.
Yes.
Jane Roos. Yes.
Corey Sellers.
Yes.
Lance Stroud.
Yes.